Say good evening to everybody, and before we get started tonight, I'd like to welcome Pastor Patrick Abent of Interquest Church in the City of Alpharetta for meeting's an invocation.
He's actually in Milton, that's pronounced wrong, he's in Milton.
We're from Milton.
Milton.
Oh, Milton.
Used to be Alpharetta.
All right. Okay, so let's just all close our eyes for a moment and just breathe. And as we breathe, let's just breathe in God's love. Breathe in God's love and letting God's love flow through us now. And as this love flows through us, we're just gonna release the day, the busyness of the day, any worries or concerns that we might be carrying into this meeting this night. Let's just let all those go, so that we can be clear in all that has to be accomplished this night. So just breathe and just feel your body relaxed now, receptive to the highest good for all. And Father, we ask a blessing upon this council meeting this night. We ask a blessing upon Joe Lockwood and the City Council, as they stand forth to steward this city, Milton. Ask a blessing upon the city, this meeting this night, and all the people that live in this city. May they feel your presence and feel the love in which they live and move and have their being. So bless this meeting this night, Father. Our prayer, thy will be done. And so it is. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. Okay, I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, November 19th, 2012, to order. If the City Clerk will please call roll and make general announcements.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the November 19th, 2012, regular meeting. I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment this evening, during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items under first presentation. Those called to speak will be taken in order, but the speaker cards were received by the City Clerk prior to the beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will please identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. The City Council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided that such an individual shall file a notarized affidavit that they have the authority to speak on behalf of said organization on a form provided by the City Clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Demonstration of any sort within this chamber is prohibited, so please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood?
Here.
Councilmember Karen Thurman?
Here.
Councilmember Matt Koontz?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk?
Here.
Councilmember Bert Hewitt?
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria?
Here.
Councilmember Lance Large?
Here.
This evening, we are honored to have the Sons of the American Revolution lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Would everyone please rise?
Ready? Hold. To the right, face. Present, come. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Two. To the left, face. To the front, line. Ready? Hold. Dismissed.
Thank you. Good evening. Want to welcome everybody here tonight. It's great to see, we've got a big crowd here, we've got some proclamations and presentations to present tonight, which we're very proud of. And we're also very proud and excited to have Congressman Tom Price here in our audience. So thank you Congressman for being here. And we'll go ahead and get started with our business, and then we'll move on to the presentations in just a few minutes. For City Clerk, can you call the first item?
Our first item this evening is approval of meeting agenda, agenda item number 12-293.
Okay. Do I have a...any items on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one item to add under new business, and that is to add a resolution electing absent municipality status regarding all future lost proceedings related to and triggered by the 2010 census.
Okay. Anything else? Councilmember? Okay. All right. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I have moved that we approve the meeting agenda as amended by the City Manager.
A second.
Okay. Got a motion by Councilmember Large, second by Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimous. Okay. Do we have any public comment tonight?
We do not, sir.
Okay. And we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Our first item this evening under consent agenda is approval of the November 5th, 2012, regular City Council minutes. Agenda item number 12-294. Next, approval of the November 14th, 2012, City Council Work Session Minutes. Agenda item number 12-295. Next, approval of a revised professional services agreement between the City of Milton and SunTrust Banks, Inc., for banking services. Agenda item number 12-296. Next, approval of a contract renewal between the City of Milton and AT&amp;T for telephone services. Agenda item number 12-297. Approval of a construction services agreement between the City of Milton and Blunt Construction Company, Inc., for sidewalk curb and gutter repair at various locations within the city. Agenda item number 12-298. Our sixth item this evening is approval of the acquisition of 1,247.47 square feet of right-of-way, 5,434.51 square feet of permanent construction and maintenance easement at 12655 New Providence Road from Panayotis and Zoe Theo Fondas for a total combined purchase price of $18,000. Agenda item number 12-299. Next, approval of the acquisition of 2,157 square feet of right-of-way and 450 square feet of permanent construction and maintenance easement at 12700 New Providence Road from Andrea L. and James R. Little for a total combined purchase price of $34,500. Agenda item number 12-300. Our eighth consent agenda item this evening, approval of the acquisition of 701.03 square feet of right-of-way, 2,175.24 square feet of permanent construction and maintenance easement at 12600 Arnold Mill Road from Fulton County for a total combined purchase price of $4,000. Agenda item number 12-301. Next, approval of the acquisition of 15,648.88 square feet of right-of-way and 14,060.42 square feet of permanent construction and maintenance easement at 14575 Providence Road from Ray Shepherd and Melanie Lynn Brooks for a total combined purchase price of $40,500. This is agenda item number 12-302. Next, approval of a professional services agreement between the City of Milton and Owens Environmental Design, LLC, for conceptual design of Deerfield Park. Agenda item number 12-303. Our final consent agenda item this evening is approval of a contract between the City of Milton and Families First, Inc., to provide Employee Assistance Program, EAP, services to city employees and their families. Agenda item number 12-304.
Okay. Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I have moved that we pull item number 10, agenda item number 12-303, from the consent agenda and move to new business.
Okay. Do I have anything else? All right.
I move to approve the consent agenda as modified.
We need to modify. Do I have a second on Councilmember Lusk's request to move that to new business?
Second.
Okay. I've got a motion and a second to take item number...agenda item number 12-303 and remove it from the consent agenda and move it to new business. Do I have any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Now we'll open up for a motion on the other items.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as amended.
I'll second the motion. Okay. Gonna move by Councilmember Thurman, second by Councilmember Lusk. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. Now we will move on to our reports and presentation. Have the City Clerk call the first item, which will be the presentation of the flag of the United States of America to the City of Milton, and we are proud and happy to have Congressman Tom Price here to do that.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. Good evening to Council and to fellow citizens. It's a great honor to be with you tonight, and so far, the example that you've provided, I'm gonna take back to Washington. You're working very, very well together. Wonderful to see. I have the great privilege in honor of representing the 6th District of Georgia, which is parts of Cobb, Fulton, and DeKalb Counties. I also have the distinction, I think, of being the representative for the only district in the United States that has had as many new cities form over the past five years. So I want to congratulate the City of Milton, y'all are really bringing to life the wonderful virtue of self-governance and doing it in a way that I think is remarkably responsive to your constituents and mine as well. There aren't many perks for members of Congress, I know that's hard to believe, but they've taken a bunch of them away, and that's just fine and appropriate. One of the perks, though, that I do have is the opportunity to be able to designate the flying of our great flag, the Stars and Stripes, over the United States Capitol to designate it in honor of an individual or an entity. And Bill Lusk came to me a number of months ago and said, hey, we'd love to be able to...you think you could help us get a flag? And I said, I can not only do that, we can fly it over the Capitol. So I'm here today, this evening, to present to the City of Milton a flag that is of the United States that's flown over the United States Capitol. Bill, do you want to come on down and accept that?
Sure.
On behalf of the Council?
Bill?
Ah. This certificate is...that accompanies this flag identifies it as having flown over the United States Capitol on August 17th, 2012, in honor and flown for the City of Milton, Georgia. Congratulations. You bet. They've taken to heart your non-applauding. I'm gonna leave. Again, just want to say how pleased we are having you represent us, and thank you for
being here tonight and presenting that flag. Okay. Next item is proclamation recognizing City of Milton, 2012, Police Officer of the Year, Keenan Gray. And Officer Gray is a very professional and proactive police officer. He takes great pride in his work and service to the citizens of Milton. He's a consummate team player that goes above and beyond what is expected of him in regards to helping out other members of the department. His desire is to dig deeper in certain situations that has resulted in several substantial narcotics arrests that were the result of traffic stops for minor violations. Officer Gray also commanded on his...was commended on his professionalism by a member of the Fulton County District Attorney's Office. It is his attitude, demeanor, and desire to be a well-rounded police officer that makes him a valuable asset to the City of Milton. It is because of these qualities that he was nominated and selected as Officer of the Year for 2012. So I'm now going to read the proclamation. After I'm done, I'd like to invite Officer Gray and the Sons of the American Revolution to, as they would like, to also recognize Officer Gray up to the podium. Whereas, Officer Keenan Gray has been selected as Officer of the Year for the City of Milton Police Department for 2012, as nominated by his peers and selected by command staff. And whereas, Officer Keenan Gray has performed his duties as an officer in a faithful and loyal manner by exhibiting his dedication to preserving the rights and security of all Milton citizens. And whereas, Officer Keenan Gray has worked beyond expectations, putting in numerous days and hours above and beyond his requirements of his assignment. And whereas, Officer Keenan Gray has demonstrated a strong work ethic, as demonstrated in his willingness to go above and beyond his daily duties to bring cases to a resolution. And whereas, Officer Keenan Gray displays a professional and commendable demeanor with citizens and victims and is an outstanding example to others, other officers and supervisors. Now therefore, I, the Mayor of the City of Milton, and Milton City Council, and citizens of the City of Milton formally recognize Officer Keenan Gray for his outstanding performance as a member of the Milton Police Department, and I further call that the City of Milton hereby recognize the achievements of Officer Keenan Gray and express pride in presenting to him the 2012 Officer of the Year Award. This is given under our hand and the seal of the City of Milton on this 19th day of November. And if Officer Gray would step up to the podium, and the Council will follow me to it.
National Society of Sons of the American Revolution, Piedmont Chapter, City of Milton, Piedmont Chapter, Sons of the American Revolution. On this 19th day of November, 2012, we recognize the tremendous service of a police officer, James Gray. A police officer of the City of Milton for two years, a police officer recognized by a member of the Fulton County Attorney's Office for his professionalism in law enforcement, a police officer who is a valued member of the City of Milton Law and Police Department. Police officer who did a detailed investigation resulting in numerous non-hodges arrests. Police officer who recognized him as a member of the City of Milton for two years, 2012. An officer who was associated with community and law enforcement, a worthy candidate for the reward of Sons of the American Revolution, law enforcement, and accountability.
And I'd like to just add a couple comments, too. This, number one, thanks to the Sons of the American Revolution for being here and helping us out, as usual. Also, Officer Gray, and this goes out to every other public safety officer in the room, as well as all the public safety officers out there that are keeping us, protecting us tonight and every day. It just goes without saying that these guys are just...it's awesome that they're putting their life on the line every day for us, and most of us, they don't even know. So just want to let you guys know how much both myself and the Council, and I'm sure the citizens of Milton appreciate you guys being there for us. So, thank you very much.
And like to make special note that Congressman Price is also a member of Piedmont Chapter, Sons of the American Revolution.
Next item on our agenda is a proclamation recognizes...recognizing National American Indian Heritage Month. This proclamation honoring the National American Indian Heritage Month, a designation that began in 1976 and expanded in 1990, but dates back to 1916. It's a very interesting story of how it got started. Red Fox James, a member of the Blackfoot Confederacy, rode horseback from state to state, getting endorsements from 24 separate governments to have a day that honors Native Americans. This proclamation was brought to us by the Daughters of the American Revolution, Martha Stewart Bullock Chapter, specifically their American Indian Committee. Tonight, we are honored to have us...have with us Ms. Jill Webster, the Chair. I'd like to invite her up to the podium after I read this proclamation, so we can take some photos. Okay, proclamation, the National American Indian Heritage Month. Whereas, the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous peoples. And whereas, the contributors of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America to deck. And whereas, their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States. And whereas, Native American Awareness Month began in 1976, and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August, 1990, designating November as a National American Heritage Month, Indian Heritage Month. And whereas, in honor of National American Heritage Month, community celebrations, as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historic activities, have been planned. Now therefore, we, the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Milton, hereby proclaim November 12th as National American Indian Heritage Month in the City of Milton, Georgia, and urge all of our citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. This is given under our hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia, on the 19th day of November, 2012. And if Ms. Webster will join us, as well as the Council. Okay. all these presentations and proclamations, so we're...we do have to get some work done, but these are the good parts, you know, one of the good parts of our jobs, and we're proud of the folks that we give them to. And this next proclamation is recognizing Milton-based M.D. Junior and Sean Verma. This proclamation honoring Milton High School senior Sean, who started a wonderful nonprofit that connects underserved youth interested in careers in the medical field with doctors and other healthcare professionals. As you'll hear during his presentation, Sean has opened more than 20 chapters in just three years, and led the group on medical missions to Honduras. Please welcome Sean Verma, who will talk to us about M.D. Junior after the presentation. I would like to invite Sean and his family to the podium when I read the proclamation, so we can get our photos with a young man that certainly would be an inspiration to all of us. And I just have to say this, I had the pleasure of meeting with Sean and his dad Sandy one afternoon, and he brought some information with him in a presentation. As we were talking, I was sitting there and I was looking at his presentation and listening, and I was thinking, this is really a neat thing, and as we, you know, going on through it, I'm thinking, well, Sean's really a sharp guy, you know, getting involved with this. It was about halfway through the presentation when, again, I was just thinking, you know, what a great guy, and all this future he's got, and it's great that he's involved in this organization. And then it really dawned on me that Sean had started this organization himself, and it was...I'll tell you how impressed I was, is after we got through talking, I grabbed the rest of city staff and I said, you guys gotta come in here and see what Sean's done. So I'm sure, as I know, his parents and family are very proud of him, and he's a real inspiration to not only us, but should be to other students and kids. We asked if Sean would mind taking a few minutes and giving us a little presentation on the work that he's done. It's very impressive. He's gone out and a lot of intercity school and kids that may not have a lot of direction and whatnot, and hooked them up with mentors in the medical field and let them shadow them and get an idea and somebody to look up to and kind of a mentor, and then he kind of...and obviously Sean will tell you a lot more about it, but then he brought together other kids, and they started getting together and doing, volunteering and helping out patients and donating time and other things for folks that needed medically. And then, as he was showing his presentation, then he got together groups that went to Honduras and served folks that needed medical, had medical needs. So it's pretty amazing, but I'll let Sean take it in the next few minutes and show us a little bit about what he's doing, so.
Well, my name's Sean Verma. I am a 12th grader at Milton High School. And first, I just want to say thanks to everyone for being here. Thanks for...Mayor Joe, for the introduction, and it's an honor to be speaking in front of congressmen and other honorable guests here. So M.D. Junior is an organization with the mission to inspire selfless service through mentorship, and we do that by bringing together medical professionals with middle school and high school students, and we build a sort of structured mentor-mentee relationship. We have chapters which are across Georgia and across a few other states, but these are the middle schools or high schools where the meetings are conducted. The mentors are the healthcare professionals, and the mentees are the students, and then everything is brought together kind of through social networks and different networking mechanisms, and we have a lot of local and global initiatives. So some local initiatives that we've done, we target a few core issues in the status quo. The first is high school dropouts. Now, this is a nationwide issue. There...interesting fact, a high school drops out every 26 seconds, but the sad part is it gets a bit worse in Georgia. One in every three high schoolers is expected to drop out, and one of the major reasons for that is disengagement. A lot of students feel like what they're doing in school isn't going to have an impact on later in life. So we target that by building this sort of structured mentor-mentee relationship, especially in the niche of healthcare, students really look up to this field when they go to the hospital, they know that these are the people that are saving lives, and we think that this is a sort of mentoring relationship that can work. The second large issue is the shortage of medical professionals. Another interesting fact is that in the next 15 years, the US will face a shortage of 150,000 physicians, and it gets even worse in other fields of medical...medicine, not even physicians, but the reason is that a lot of people are going to the medical profession because there are various reasons, but we believe that students should focus not on its monetary aspects or making money in the medical profession, but we inspire students to go into the medical profession for the noble aspects, for helping other people, just the intrinsic parts of the organization itself. The last is the spirit of compassion, humanitarian terrorism in teenagers today. There's a large lack of it, sad to say, but a lot of students just do what they want to do just to make money, but M.D. Junior believes that we should engage in selfless service or giving back to the community and not just doing everything for yourself. But everything that we do is based on this thing called the three pillars of success, or knowledge, skills, and attitude, and that's kind of how we implement our local and global initiatives. So knowledge is just basic healthcare education, and we do...this is where the medical professionals come in to chapters to speak about their field of expertise. That might be orthopedics, that might be first aid, that might be cardiology. Skill sessions are where it's more hands-on, so this is where students go and visit hospitals, visit clinics, do job shadowing, and then attitude is, again, that spirit of selfless service and using that knowledge and those skills to give back to the community. Our global initiatives, it's based in the country of Honduras, if anybody didn't know, this is in Central America, but Honduras is one of the poorest countries in the Western Hemisphere. It has over 60% of the rural population living under the Honduran poverty line. When I went there, there were people, families of five and six... When I went there, there were people, families of five and six, living under fifty cents a day. Even bigger than that is the issue of the shortage of medical care there. An interesting fact is that more than fifty percent of the rural population doesn't have any medical care within a four or five-hour walk, and more than fifty percent of all medical care delivered in Honduras is through medical missions that go there, which shows that the healthcare system is not really up to par in Honduras. But M.D. Junior implemented a sort of innovative program in Honduras. We took our local mentoring approach, so where we bring together medical professionals and high school students, and we took that to Honduras. So, in order to inspire Honduran high schoolers to go into the medical field, we brought students from the U.S., medical professionals from the U.S., and students from Honduras and medical professionals from Honduras to implement a non-toxic, is what we call it, medical mission in the country of Honduras. So, where M.D. Junior is today, this is just a brief summary, but we have a bit over twenty chapters across the U.S., two of which are in Honduras. We have a bit over six hundred youth that we're impacting right now, over a hundred medical professionals, which does not just include physicians, but paramedics, Air Force personnel, a variety of healthcare-related professions. We have over seven thousand hours as an organization logged in, over forty thousand dollars raised, and locally, we've impacted a lot of different organizations we worked with. You'll see that in a second in the video, and then globally, we've implemented two medical missions to Honduras, the last of which was in August. So, forthcoming projects, if anybody was interested, and actually, next weekend, this coming weekend, is the STEM Fest that we're, M.D. Junior is volunteering at at Georgia Tech. We also have, one of the biggest events that we're organizing is the Charity Ball, which is our big fundraising event next year, and then Global Youth Service Day is another one of the big missions that we're planning for next year. And then globally, our next medical mission to Honduras is going to be in March, if anybody was interested in getting involved with that. So, the call to action, I always like having this in my presentations, so if you're a healthcare professional, that does not mean you have to be a physician, but if you've been associated with the medical profession, you can become an M.D. Junior mentor. If you're a student, if you're an educator, you can start a chapter at your middle school or high school or elementary school. I know Crab Apple's here today. And then, for the community, we need advocates, we need sponsors, everything, every little effort makes a big difference and goes a long way. So, if anybody was interested, this is my contact information, and really quickly, I know we're on a tight schedule, but I'm just gonna show a quick video.
Sure, love to see it, it's great.
It helps young people understand what medical professionals have to go through and how they can help them.
We want to program coordinator at an organization called MedShare International. What we do is we collect surplus medical supplies that can be used by hospitals and manufacturers, and other boxes that M.D. Junior packages on, some they hate, you know, rebuilding after the earthquake that happened in January two thousand and ten, some to Libya, and help with rebuilding the country after all the turmoil they've had there, and some boxes also go to Sudan, and well, newest country also helped them rebuild after recent turmoil there.
And there's, I think, a warehouse space, and just to give you a little bit of the scope of the impact that M.D. Junior has made, they help pack probably several, probably the hundreds of the boxes that you see behind me are our inventory.
Today, M.D. Junior, we, Twisted Tide and Sword, they'll be crutches and barreled them, so that when they make the drop, that they can, it'll be much easier, and so that they can find them. And today, with our M.D. Juniors, they did a drop-off for a man who lost, who lost one of his legs. So, we go up to deliver a wheelchair and bedside table to him, so that his life can make it more easier.
Okay, so do you mind sharing why it raises here today, why M.D. Junior is here today?
Well, I, something, a couple months ago, I flew in from Africa, Liberia, suffered an airborne flight, and there at the Georgia airport, on a flight of fear and shield, I had to call the paramedics, and the paramedics pulled me off, and the next thing I was in this hospital, and the next thing I do, I got a pediatric medic. And yeah, and today, life has changed.
Yeah. Hey, everyone, this is Sean Verma, M.D. Junior. We just landed into Uzicabal, Honduras, and we are on our way.
We're here in the Cuiro San Antonio. Oh, okay, so she's saying that she's walked for three hours just to get here. Oh, okay, she's saying that her son is sick, and she's coming.
M.D. Junior! M.D. Junior! M.D. Junior! All right! We're here on our first day in Complimento in Adelie, Palaiso, and this is the first day of the M.D. Junior lower mentor medical mission, and there are approximately three hundred people behind us waiting and more to come, and I have here with me Dr. Karen.
So, now, we are going to talk to the patients and see if they're coming and what the disease they have. She's coming with her baby for consultation, and her too. Oh, well, he's sick, so he had, you know, so that's why she's coming for the consultation, because the baby's sick, and she wants to have a consultation too. Our dentist just said that she's going to be doing general surgery for children, and all the kids are all lighting up and getting organized for that.
So, she needs an operation?
As you saw in the camera, the baby's been born without a soft palate, so she's going to have all kinds of trouble with failing to cry, she's not going to be able to speak, she's not going to be able to eat, and she's going to have over and over again pneumonia.
We're here in Complimento, in the middle of a tropical storm, under this metallic jet, and we're just waiting to understand.
This community is of very confidence, called Flores. We have here, we have many of concrete floors and a couple of homes, homes away here, a lot of water supply, not only have a sewage system, and some of the major problems we saw in this community were parasitic infections, which may prevent and provide good floors for these homes, therefore decreasing the incidence of infection or having pathogens enter through the door.
This is the nation building, not state building, not government building, not federal building. This is nation building, because we need you to be a part of it.
Okay, I imagine there's no doubt as why I was impressed when I met and talked to Sean, so I appreciate him sharing his presentation. Kind of begs the question to all of the students, including my own kids, what are you going to do this summer? Anyways, I've got a proclamation here honoring Milton-based M.D. Junior and Sean Verma. Whereas, Milton High School senior Sean Verma founded M.D. Junior in two thousand and nine with the mission of inspiring selfless service through mentorship. And whereas, the now nonprofit organization fulfills this mission by connecting medical and healthcare professionals with middle and high school students who have a strong desire to reach their full potential. And whereas, students in the program work together to bring healthcare professionals to work, to speak about their work, then take service trips to volunteer at healthcare organizations like MedShare, Emory Hospitals, Piedmont Healthcare, and the American Red Cross. And whereas, students took a medical mentor mission to Honduras in two thousand and twelve, facilitating an understanding of poverty and service to others. And whereas, in just three years, more than twenty chapters utilizing the three pillars of success, knowledge, skills, and attitude, have been established in schools in the United States and Honduras, with the first college chapter slated to open this fall at Emory and Vanderbilt Universities. And whereas, because of his work, in October, during the Youth Services Institute National Conference in Houston, Sean received the two thousand and twelve Harris-Wolff Youth Award, given to the American teen who demonstrates exemplary commitment and action involving his peers in service, youth voice, service learning, and civil engagement. And whereas, Sean, who also received the Presidential Service Award for Excellence in Community Service and Outstanding Leadership in two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve. Therefore, we, the Mayor and City Council of the City of Milton, hereby honor M.D. Junior and Sean Verma, and encourage all citizens to do the same, given under our hand and seal of the City of Milton, Georgia, on this nineteenth day of November two thousand and twelve. And if Sean, if you and your family could come forward to the podium, as well as the City Council, Congressman Price, if you wouldn't mind joining us. Crab Apple Crossing Elementary School's designation as a Blue Ribbon School. So, any day we get to announce something like this, it's a great day for the City of Milton. Next on the agenda, we're going to recognize Crab Apple Crossing Schools' designation as a Blue Ribbon School by the U.S. Department of Education. This is the highest honor a school can achieve, and Crab Apple Crossing was one of just two hundred and sixty-nine schools nationwide to receive this designation. So, I'm now going to read the proclamation, and after I'm done, I'd like to invite Principal George Freiburger and students from Crab Apple Crossing Elementary School to the podium so we can take some pictures and present it along with the council. Okay, I've got a proclamation here recognizing Crab Apple Crossing Elementary School's designation as Blue Ribbon School, a Blue Ribbon School. Whereas, Crab Apple Crossing Elementary was named a two thousand and twelve Blue Ribbon School by the U.S. Department of Education, and as such, was honored at a recognition ceremony November twelfth and thirteenth in Washington, D.C. And whereas, previously, Crab Apple Crossing Elementary School was a two-time winner of the Georgia School of Excellence Distinction in two thousand and four and two thousand and ten, and set a goal to receive the national honor by two thousand and thirteen. And whereas, Crab Apple Crossing Elementary School was given the Blue Ribbon designation because of its status as an exemplary, high-performing school, recognized as a place where students perform at very high levels, and where significant improvements in achievement are being made. And whereas, Crab Apple Crossing Elementary School is a place where teachers work together, parents are involved and engaged in the school and their children's learning, and business partners support many different programs at the school. And whereas, Crab Apple Crossing Elementary School was one of just two hundred and sixty-nine schools nationwide to receive the designation in two thousand and twelve. And whereas, the faculty and families of Crab Apple Crossing Elementary School make it a special place regardless of awards, and we are proud this great team is located in our City of Milton. Now, therefore, we, the Mayor and the City Council of the City of Milton, hereby direct and proclaim Monday, November nineteenth, as Crab Apple Crossing Elementary School Blue Ribbon School Day in the City of Milton, Georgia. This is given under our hand and the seal of the City of Milton on the nineteenth day of November two thousand and twelve. And if Principal Freiburger and students would please come up, and if the council... And whereas, Crab Apple Crossing Elementary School was given the Blue Ribbon designation because of its status as an exemplary, exemplary high-performing school, recognized as a place where students perform at very high levels, and where significant improvements in achievement are being made. And whereas, Crab Apple Crossing Elementary School is a place where teachers work together, parents are involved and engaged in the school and their children's learning, and business partners support many different programs at the school. And whereas, Crab Apple Crossing Elementary School was one of just 269 schools nationwide to receive the designation in 2012. And whereas, the faculty and families of Crab Apple Crossing Elementary School make up a special place regardless of awards, and we are proud this great team is located in our city of Milton. Now therefore, we, the mayor and the city council of the city of Milton hereby direct and proclaim Monday, November 19th, as Crab Apple Crossing Elementary School Blue Ribbon School Day in the city of Milton, Georgia. And this is given under our hand and the seal of the city of Milton on the 19th day of November, 2012. And if Principal Freiburger and students would please come up, and if the council will... Okay, we're gonna move on to our first presentation, so if our city clerk would call that item, please.
Our item is consideration of an ordinance reaffirming and establishing Chapter 46 of the Milton Code of Ordinances, governing solid waste collection services within the city of Milton, providing for the scope and nature of the operation, providing for the disposal of garbage, solid waste, and refuse, requiring the execution by service providers of a non-exclusive agreement with the city of Milton, providing procedures for the handling of complaints, providing for an infrastructure maintenance fee, requiring indemnity insurance, providing for revocation and amendment prohibiting assignment and subletting without consent, providing for forfeiture and for making other provisions. This is Agenda Item Number 12-305. This was discussed at the council's work session on November 14th, 2012.
Okay, do I have a motion and second on this first presentation?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the first presentation of Agenda Item Number 12-305.
A second?
Okay, got a second by Councilmember Loz, second on that by Councilmember Hewitt. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Tonight, we have no items under public hearing and zoning agenda, so we're gonna move on to unfinished business. If our city clerk will please sound those items.
Our first item is consideration of an ordinance, amending ordinance number 090949, adopting and amending rules and procedures for the city council meetings and public hearings for the city of Milton, Georgia, and for other purposes. This is Agenda Item Number 12-284. First presentation was heard at the November 5th, 2012 regular council meeting. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. This item is a modification of the city of Milton internal rules and procedures with respect to how you conduct your official business, and this modification was undertaken in light of the new modifications to the Open Records, excuse me, Open Meetings Act applicable to Georgia. That modification occurred in April of this year, and it was appropriate therefore to sort of upgrade or update all of your policies, and that's what your city clerk and I set out to do, and you see probably in front of you, I hope in your agenda packet, you see a red line. Hope everybody sees a red line. Good. Okay, so there's a fairly significant red line in there, and unless you want me to walk you through each and every red line, which I'm happy to do...
Can we do that behind closed doors?
Actually, no, sir. You actually have to have that out in the open, which is part and parcel with the Open Meetings Act and your rules. Basically, all we did was take your rules and make sure they are perfectly consistent with the act, which is what we did. We tweaked a few things, just that needed to be modified, for instance, under the mayor pro tem in Section 6, and we pulled some language from the charter to better reflect in your rules sort of the obligations and requirements of the mayor pro tem. But unless you have any specific questions, I think these are fairly explanatory, and there's gonna be nothing really in there that's different than what the state law allows, so we're just sort of harmonizing. If I could bring to your attention one thing, though, that I do want to request of you, and it's on page 6 of 9 in the red line version, and it's under Section 14B, and it's just something I want you to think about, because this has been a little bit of a proverbial thorn, at least in my side. I don't know if the city manager will share this with you or not, but it has to do with when your agendas have to be set. And it's in Section 14B, and it says, "Items for consideration by the council must be placed in city council meeting or work session agendas, honor before 5:00 PM, no less than seven working days prior to the scheduled meeting." You have every right to have that rule in there, and that is perfectly fine. However, there's no requirement that your agendas be locked down like that early, and there's just been some occasions from time to time when there may be something we wanted to add to the agenda a little later than that, that we really couldn't do because your agenda was so locked down unless there was an unusual or exceptional circumstance. But I just want the council to think about that, if there was any interest in perhaps just providing that the agenda will be provided and posted and consistent with the Open Meetings Act. Now, the city manager or the clerk may say, you know what, this works well, let's don't fix it, it's not broken, but I wanted to at least bring it to your attention, because sometimes you all may want to add something later than seven days out, and it's sometimes gonna be a little tricky to do that. Now, at the actual meeting itself, this does not take away our ability to change the agenda at the meeting, so we still have the ability to do that, but it does set sort of an arbitrary date back when you're, within which your agenda has to be posted and published for the first time. So, I wanted to mention that to you as well, just in case you wanted to think about that. Otherwise, I'm very comfortable with these. I've gone over them with your clerk. I believe that these are exactly what the law provides, and then we just modify it to make sure the Milton rules are consistent.
Okay, any questions, ma'am?
Yeah, just a quick question on what you were talking about. Obviously, I mean, earlier today, we just changed something from the casino agenda to new business during this meeting.
Right, perfectly appropriate.
And so, that's really, so what we just did here, even though we're doing that, we're just putting the language in the ordinance to be able to do that, whereas currently it's not there.
Well, the reordering, reconstruction of the agenda at the meeting, perfectly appropriate. Your rules don't in any way impact your ability to do that. I'm simply talking about when you're preparing for an upcoming meeting, and you're trying to get all your agenda items put together, there has just been an occasion, and typically it's not staff-driven. Staff's good at getting their stuff in, their stuff's in. It's typically maybe a council initiative or some sort of council item, and you wanted to get it in maybe five days before the meeting. You can't do that.
So, this is essentially an addition to an agenda, not necessarily a movement of an agenda.
That's correct.
Gotcha.
Just something to think about.
I'd like what I did tonight in the approval of the agenda. But, you know, when that agenda item presents, I would argue that we needed to do that tonight for an emergency purpose, because we had an event that was occurring that needed immediate protection.
Oh, well, with respect to that addition, yeah, and again, that's what I meant to say, the Open Meetings Act absolutely has allowed, and allowed actually before this latest revision, items to be added to the agenda on the night of the meeting. In fact, that is expressly stated in the Open Meetings Act. Again, this is more of just a, when you're coming toward a meeting that's like six or seven days out, when you need to get your agenda items posted. So, I'm not trying to insert confusion, I just wanted you to know there have been some times we've been leading up to a meeting, it would have been nice to have a little more flexibility on setting that published agenda, that's all.
And Ken, if you don't mind, I'd like to do this for the benefit of our public here, as well as our students tonight. The Open Meetings Act, sometimes you hear sunshine laws and all that, if maybe you could help me, just a brief explanation. Any of your elected officials that are handling city business, which in turn is your tax dollars, we are by law, which is good law, we have to do that out in an open meeting where the public is notified and invited, so that any decisions we make with your tax dollars or anything with the city, you have to at least be available to be aware, you know, you guys can be there. In fact, right before this meeting, we had a meeting back in the conference room on a different subject, but we left the door open and invited anybody could come in there, because what you don't wanna have is, you don't wanna have your government and elected officials going behind doors, making decisions, and without the public's input. And we're not allowed, even as it takes the majority of vote to make an action, which are seven of us, that'd be four, we're not allowed to meet with four of us without it being an open meeting that the public's invited. So, any more than two or three of us talking somewhere, we can't go, you know, again, more to four, more than three, and talk about business or any action. The only time we can go behind closed doors to deal with city business, if there's just a small handful of items or reasons you can do that, and that might be on a litigation or a lawsuit, or if the city or if it was a county was purchasing land or something, you can discuss it behind closed doors so that, so that people don't, you know, other people don't know what the numbers are. Personnel issues and things like that, but we still, even behind closed doors, can't take any action. We have to come out in front of the public and advertise it and make our decisions and vote on things in front of the public. So, I don't know, Ken, if you've got anything else you wanna add, just so that, you know, that's, there's some good rules in there that keep, keep your elected officials that are dealing with your tax dollars, everything out in the open.
Mr. Mayor, my work here is done. You have perfectly summarized the sunshine laws.
Anyway, all right, I'll, if there's any more questions, if not, I'll ask for a motion and a second on that.
Mayor?
Yes?
I would like to ask staff, the rule was originally put in for, and it says seven working days, which to me would be, you only have five working days a week, so, I know a lot of times you do work seven days a week, but that would mean that it really has to be done the Thursday before a council meeting. It was done for y'all's benefit. Would you prefer to keep it at this, or do you believe it could be reduced so it's not seven working days, or what would your preference be? And what is, what do most other cities have?
That is a little bit more stringent than I've seen in some other cities. I could go back and probably tell a story that you all would know what the story is as to how it ended up in the first place. And if in fact I told that story, that a rule like this would in fact prevent those that might share differing views or might be on their way out of elected office from doing anything in the 23rd hour, calling a meeting on December the 31st to see what they could potentially pass, if we block against that. I don't think that we run those, I don't think we have issues with respect to that at this point, nor am I making a judgment as to whether or not we ever did. But that's what this kind of a rule protects against. We could just as easily have it say three days, and I think, the thing I would like to say is it'd be long enough that you all feel as though you could be properly informed to take action on the agenda items at the council meeting. And that's really what we're trying to do here, so that we don't throw some stuff at you 12 minutes before the meeting and expect you to make a good sound decision. So, if this had three business days, and you feel as though that would be 72 hours, is long enough for us to present something to you that you could feel confident taking action on at a council meeting? I'd say three would, you know, to take out seven and insert three, you know, we still have a deadline, and I still think we could function within it. You know, we probably should have a deadline, but I don't know that it needs to be seven days.
And if I may offer, Councilmember Thurman, to what he just said, even if the council was to change that from seven to three, that would not prevent Chris, the city manager, from dictating to staff that staff will have its agenda items seven days. You see what I'm saying? Because he could still contain himself, he's getting you the information timely. This sets the floor, and that's the only distinction.
And if something was brought up three days in advance that we didn't feel like we had enough information on, we can always defer it.
Absolutely, that's right.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, well, if I'm up for a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we approve a consideration of an ordinance, amending ordinance number 09-09-49, adopting and amending rules and procedures for the city council meetings and public hearings for the city of Milton, Georgia, and for other purposes, Agenda Item Number 12-284, with the change for Section 14 under Agenda Item B to say three working days prior to scheduled meeting rather than seven.
Second motion. Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Thurman, and second by Councilmember, or second by Councilmember Loz, and want to confirm, did you change that to three days versus seven?
Yeah, three working days versus seven.
Okay, and staff's okay with that?
This is very helpful, thank you.
Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. City clerk, please call the next unfinished business item.
Next item is consideration of an ordinance to amend Article 3, Property Maintenance, Division 4, General Requirements, Section 10-267, Exterior Property Requirements of Chapter 10, Buildings and Building Regulations of the City of Milton Code, Agenda Item Number 12-285. First presentation is at the November 5th regular meeting. Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
Mayor and council, this agenda item for you tonight is one of those that's gonna look as though it is fixing a very small issue, and if it looks like that, it is, because that's exactly what this is doing. This came to our attention after we had code enforcement trying to pursue a couple of cases in the municipal court where the judge ruled that our ordinance as it existed was vague, and it was vague to the point that it was silent on topic, but he didn't know if it was purposefully silent or not. The last thing you wanna do when you have a judge from the bench rule that your ordinance is vague is to just leave it that way. So, we felt as though it was appropriate to bring it forward and let the city attorney weigh in, as well as the city solicitor weigh in on this ordinance. The vagueness was in whether or not undeveloped lots in a subdivision were required to be maintained in the same standard as a developed lot. And then I'll pinch you the picture here just quickly, just play this up out time and time again, and then I'll ask that you maybe consider some additional language here in just a second. But if you go to a neighborhood, and that's just for the purposes of quick discussion, let's say there's 15 lots in the neighborhood, and all of a sudden, five of them are developed, and you have five beautiful billion and a half dollar houses that tend to make it lots, and then the bank came in in 2008 and took the last 10 lots back. Somebody else comes in and buys the land and buys it, and then just sits on it until this economy does the signal and is recovering. You know, what has occurred is we've got subdivisions where you've got five very well-maintained lots and 10 very not-well-maintained lots, and it came to our attention in one specific neighborhood in Milton, and the unmaintained lots are just frankly unmaintained, to the point that there's the likelihood that we'll have animals looking in them and other, other things that just don't exist in, or shouldn't exist in subdivisions. We pursued trying to get a little bit of this grass cut in some of these undeveloped lots, and that was when the court determined that our ordinance was vague. Our ordinance as it exists today specifies tall grasses as weeds and says that they should be maintained at less than 10 inches, and to our staff's credit, we thought 10 inches was 10 inches, but it apparently was not specifically 10 inches to the judge, because it didn't speak about undeveloped lots in neighborhoods. Now, we finished the presentation by saying, if you'll flip onto page, the page in the agenda where it is in Section 10-267, when I had Ken write it, I had Ken perfectly write it, purposefully write it fairly broad in the idea that we would likely tighten it up at the meeting to become exactly what the council desired it to be. And you can see that what was added in this section was the words including both developed and undeveloped lots. Now, the thing I wanna caution against is that we don't cause those areas in Milton that are designed to be natural from being able to not be maintained as natural areas, and there are areas that you just don't know. So, one of the things I'd like you to consider tonight, and then we'll open up for discussion and questions if you have any of me, is that I would be interested if you might consider the language tonight, including both developed lots and undeveloped lots in flat subdivisions, to make it very clear that the lots that have to be maintained are part of the subdivision. That's where we're seeing the problem, is where these neighborhoods are partially built out, and then the remainder of it's just been let go, and you've got two independent uses or two independent divisions trying to exist next future. I think this will clarify the loss of that if we need to bring enforcement action through the code enforcement, that we could give potentially this language upheld in the municipal court. Be happy to answer your questions.
Joe?
Yeah, so, obviously, Chris, this has nothing to do with subdivisions where there's a homeowners association or some other kind of set of rules that would govern that thing, 'cause I'm not, you know, most of the time HOAs get involved in that kind of stuff.
Probably before 10 inches.
Right.
Yeah, all this would do would be to give us the enforcement to have those neighborhoods that don't have HOAs that are, you know, that fell victim to the 2008 economy crash.
So, this is, to be a little more specific, it's to address citizens that call up the city and say, hey, there's a problem with the lot next to me, the grass is too high.
Right, and I wouldn't be in front of you tonight if the ordinance as it was written was not determined by the court to be vague. You know, the ordinance that was written said 10 inches, and we interpreted 10 inches again to be 10 inches. Now, we tried that through our court system, and the judge determined it to be vague. That's why I bring it back before you, because I just don't like a ordinance on your books that the judicial branch has determined to be vague.
Understood.
Article F, Exhaust Vents, I know you're trying to capture as much as you can in these ordinances, but it seems to be overbroad when you're calling out steam or vapor as a discharge, objectionable discharge.
Okay. There's nothing about that, but if you want to have us explore that section, I'd be happy to have that staff, which could professionally answer that. We'll take a look at it if you have to. I don't, what are you asking for, are you asking for us to make a modification?
You're saying it's going a little too...
That's going a little bit too far.
What if they blow that on your jumper?
Well, yeah, then the last word in that paragraph is, shall not discharge adjacent public or private property or that of another tent. So does that apply to campers?
I shouldn't have put it on this page if you didn't want to talk about it, Chris.
Yeah, I don't have any idea.
How about this, Chris?
You guys, that's not an item on tonight, but you guys, we'll give you a fair time to go check it, go look into it.
Maybe three business days.
Three business days, if you want to bring that back for the justice later.
Aren't anybody else? Okay.
I don't know what to say, but I have no clue.
All right, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 12-285.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Before the vote, are you making a motion to add the language, Diane?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yes, yes.
To imply the subdivision?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And, no, you want to restate the motion, or, at least, Chris, you want to restate what?
Yeah, I'm asking you if you would consider adding the language, in addition to what's published, including both developed lots and undeveloped lots in flat subdivisions.
Okay.
That's, that's what I'm seconding.
Yes.
That's the second, thank you.
Okay, motion is second. All in, any discussion?
Discussion. So with these issues in paragraph F, we're going to administratively take a look at those?
We'll administratively take a look at it. If it needs to be brought back forward, we'll bring it forward.
Yeah, that's why I said have them look at it, and then they can bring it back. Look through the whole thing. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, let's move on to new business.
The first item is consideration of a resolution adopting the council and work session meeting dates, January through December 2013, Agenda Item Number 12306. Good evening, Mayor and council. We are asking tonight for the mayor and council's approval of the scheduled 2013 council meeting dates. You have before you an oversized, huge calendar showing the 36 upcoming council meetings for 2013. The blue highlighting on your calendar indicates regular, and the red indicates work session. In 2013, there are four meeting dates which will fall on a Wednesday, three regular council meetings, and one work session. And that's because of Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, Labor Day, and Veterans Day. So we'll jump to Wednesday. In preparing the 2013 calendar, the following dates were taken into consideration: the city's 11 observed holidays, the Fulton County School Calendar, as well as the Mayor's Day Conference in January, and the GMA Conference in June. Our first regular scheduled meeting this year will be January 7th on a Monday. The 2013 council meeting calendar will be available to our citizens on our website if you approve this calendar. We respectfully ask for your approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, anybody have any?
Where's the purple?
The blue?
The purple.
Oh, the purple. But it lists out, we're listing it out, which...
If you approve this tonight, it will have...
It's listed, the dates are listed on the purple, but those just aren't probably, you know...
I think they coincide with other colors.
We'll have that on within three days.
And additionally, in your packet, you saw council and work session meeting date, the grid, that shows, in this state, it shows seven days prior, so I'll switch it to three days. So for instance, December 31st, you would have received your packet for the January 7th meeting. You'll now get it on January 2nd.
Will we still be receiving packets or not?
Well, we're moving, we'll be moving to iPads soon, so the digital world is coming.
Councilmember Loos is holding out. Okay, any other questions or?
I just want to note that one of the work session days is on my birthday, so...
Well, have a cake.
That's good.
You bring it.
Yeah, I will.
What is that date? What is that date?
The 11th, right before August.
All right, Bill?
Of February, Carl.
Question regarding posting the agenda for meetings, is that going to apply for boards and commissions also?
That will be approved at the December 17th meeting for PC, BZA, DRB. Once these are ratified, and they will follow suit, look at these dates, and then follow suit with their respective boards, and they'll come forward to you on the 17th of December.
Planning Commission, DRB.
Councilmember Loos, are you asking about...
Is that your question?
Yeah.
Did that answer your question? Was your question whether or not the boards were going to adopt the similar calendar, or what happened?
Correct.
Okay, all right, then we get to the ready.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, you have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 12306.
Second. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Got some unanimous. City clerk, please call the next item.
Next item is consideration of a resolution to approve the agreement between Fulton County, Georgia, and the City of Milton, Georgia, to allow the use of Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG program funds in year 2012 in the amount of $53,750 to rehabilitate the two and a half acre former residential home estate for use as a senior center located at 15690 Hopewell Road, Milton, Georgia. Agenda Item Number 12307. Ms. Michelle McIntosh Ross.
Thank you. Good evening. If you recall back on September 17th, 2012, the City of Milton approved a resolution to submit the application to Fulton County requesting funds from the Community Development Block Grant Program to use for the rehabilitation of the city property at 15690 Hopewell Road, also known as the Hopewell House, to be used for renovation for a senior center. Subsequently, in a letter dated November 1st, 2012, Fulton County gave official notification that the City of Milton will be the recipient of fiscal year 2012 CDBG funds through the Fulton County CDBG program in the amount of $53,750. Now, tonight, we're here with a resolution to confirm the contractual agreement between the City of Milton and Fulton County to proceed with the renovation of this project. And so I'm here to ask if you would approve the resolution agreeing to the contractual agreement between Fulton County and the City of Milton. You have in your packet the full contractual agreement, and we're just asking for that approval tonight, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have before you make that decision.
Okay, open up for questions for Michelle.
Let me just add, Mr. Mayor, just because I'm sure there's a question, so let me just go ahead and get out there in front of it and answer the question, come on here, not...
Actually, there wasn't any questions.
Oh, well, I'm just going to say kidding. Please, go ahead. Just in correspondence today with members of Fulton County, we asked the question on this, and if it would go forward absent there being funding from the Senior Services North Fulton for the operations of the facility. And their response is that this, the CDBG application, it's not executed. It is on hold for verification of additional funding for general operation of the senior center. So without the verification of additional funding for general operation, the national objective as required is unlikely to occur, meaning that if, in fact, Senior Services North Fulton, as a part of Fulton County's budget process, does not fund the operations of this facility, we probably don't meet the national objective, which would allow us to use CDBG funds. So I'm sure at some point, somebody's going to ask me the question, is that are we agreeing to take this money? What happens if we don't get money from Senior Services North Fulton? The answer to that is, if we don't get money from Senior Services North Fulton, we probably also don't meet the national objective to get this money. So I think one is contingent upon the other, so I just want to get that out there on the front.
So should we be deferring this until we have an answer on that, or?
No, I think what you're saying is just the fact that if we approved this, and the senior services didn't go, then we would not, I wouldn't get this money.
What I'm trying to say is that if you approve this tonight, if you think this is a good idea, you approve this, and you approve because you want it to be a senior center. And we're kind of having the back of our head that we're going to get funding to operate it at $350,000 a year. If all of a sudden the 350 doesn't come through, you're not on the hook to fund the 350 because of accepting this or asking us to move forward.
Okay, all right. Any other questions?
Yeah.
Karen?
I am still very concerned with the $699,000 number that's in here for the construction of the facility to get it to be ready to be used for a senior facility. And I keep hearing that that number is very conservative, it's a high number, you know, that number's most likely going to go down. But it just seems like to me that with all the needs we have in the city using $699,000, even if 160 of it is coming from Fulton County, that's still an awfully big number coming out of Milton's pocket. When will we know how much the total cost of the facility is going to be? And if it ends up being $699,000, when is it too late for us to say enough is enough? We're not going to throw more money into this project, because we have better uses of our funds than that. And we can have other possibilities for senior centers that may cost us a lot less money.
Take a multiple, a multiple answer approach to your question here. The first thing that we would do, the first thing that we have done is we have had construction of this type of a facility that we envision estimated by who we determine to be a professional. And we have precision planning, cost estimating document in, done. Whether you agree with it or don't agree with it, yes, I think it's the, on the outside of what the cost would be, probably. But I think we ask in cost estimating people to be conservatives, so that we don't, you know, all of a sudden have them estimate at 300,000, and then figure out it's 400,000, and we say, guys, why are you off so much? So do I think that's the biggest number that it probably will be? Yes, I do. Number two, the first thing that we would do with the CDBG funding is actually bring on board an architect and a cost estimator to take our, you know, same way we've done with the public safety facility building, to take our cost estimate and get it more precise as we get further down the road towards actually pushing go on the construction of it. Herein lies the risk, is that all of a sudden if we start to take the CDBG money and use it for the purposes of architectural design and cost estimating, and let's just say we decide we don't want to move forward, and we stop it, and we say, okay, no more, we're not interested, we don't have, don't take the funding from Senior Services North Fulton, and in fact, we decide that we're really not interested in being in the CDBG business, what we would have to do at that point is reimburse for the funds that we had spent. So if we go down the road and spend $50,000 on architect and get a costing design, and all of a sudden pull the brakes on it, that's the response, is to reimburse whatever we've spent from the CDBG fund. So that's your risk. At any point, you can stop the train, and if the council decides that the train is out of control or needs to stop, we can do that. If you elect not to move forward tonight and decide that this isn't the right use for this particular house, we don't necessarily have to have that discussion tonight, but we're going to have to have a discussion in the near term as to whether or not we retain this asset. You know, because I can't, oh, I can't, it's not my decision, I kind of can't. But it doesn't seem responsible to continue to maintain an asset without the public having enjoyment of it. So if we're going to move forward, I'm ready to move forward and get it open to the public. We can maintain it in place, that's what we're doing, although I don't know what practical benefit that has to our citizens. We probably would be better off shedding the asset and acquiring others. But we don't need to have that discussion tonight, it's preppy that that's probably the discussion that's worth having at some point if we don't pursue opening it with some type of use, so.
And you could build a pretty nice new facility for $700,000.
I would agree 100% with you, Karen. You could, but we can't find a resource that has any amount of history with it that even comes close to this particular place. And if I remember correctly, that was really what, is what inspired us to buy it in the first place. Had this just been some farmhouse that was built in the 80s, I don't think we would have acquired it. There was another attraction there.
Well, let me say something, and Bill could probably chime in too, you know, based on our professional side. 700,000, 600, whatever. And I'll agree, that's a high number, and hopefully we could get that down. But that's a number to turn a facility into a workable facility that the senior citizens or senior services can use and can be a senior center. It doesn't matter whether it's a, you know, a house, a shed, or whatever, that's not going to change that number very much. It's the, all the commercial stuff and the access and whatnot. So, you know, saying that, yeah, we probably could, you know, duplicate it for maybe $100,000 more if we had to build it from scratch. But, you know, again, I think this, I guess my point is, whatever the cost is, we're going to have to spend it on some facility. And I believe this was the reason we bought this, and everybody was unanimous in buying it. Number two, the senior services board and the senior service center really would like to see that location and that building be used, and it's got character. It's something we want to be open to our citizens and use. Plus, we've got an opportunity here to get grant money, plus also operation money as a senior center. So, you know, whether we, I don't know if we're talking about whether we spend the money here or somewhere else, but really, I guess the question out here is, are we going to go forward with this building? Or, as Chris said, you know, sell it or whatever and put the money into another building? But to me, it makes the most sense, you know, it would be the best building to do it in, because it's a good use for a historic building, and our seniors and our citizens will get to enjoy it.
Mayor, the question that I had was, does the decision tonight, if we were to vote to support this, does it dictate that we spend a certain number of funds? And my understanding was that it didn't, that we still are in control of the budget, and if we want to lower the budget that we have for retrofitting or fixing the house before we do the additional work to it, then we're completely at liberty to do that, and...
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, conversely, if we decide, hey, there's something else that we want to put there, something that makes the value even higher, and we can somehow justify that we want to spend more than that, we could certainly do that as well. So there's nothing that ties our hands in terms of the amount of money that we spend or how we spend it. This all just has to do with whether or not we want to accept the funds from Fulton County.
And I would say, Chris, if you'll confirm, but, you know, and even if we go forward with project here or project here, when the numbers come in, we still have the authority to decide to spend that much or not. We, you know, the number may, let's say the number came in at 600, we could sit here and direct our staff to say, no, we only want to spend 400, you know, let's put it back out on the, you know, have them look at it and cut it down and value engineer it. So it's not, I don't think we're voting on spending 600,000 tonight, are we?
You are not, but the thing that you would be voting on is that the end result has to be a senior center to accept CDBG funds. That's the thing that allows those funds to be used at this location. So if the price comes in to, for it to be an adequate senior center to meet their criteria at 400,000, and all we have to spend is 400,000. But if the cost comes in to make an adequate senior center comes in at 600, you can't direct me to go spend four and then expect to retain the CDBG funding. You know, we can't, it's got to end up as a senior center. At the end of the day, it can't end up as a wedding chapel. Or a, whatever.
It could be both.
It could be both.
Matt? And just a question on the timing of everything as well, and you're basically saying that if we don't do it now, then it's got to be, you know, discarded as an asset entirely, you know?
No, 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 no.
Is that what you're saying, or is that something where we could wait a year and then come up, go back through the process again?
You know, at this point, that facility is weatherized. So winterized, weatherized, whatever you want. Summarized, it functions in all four seasons. It is not deteriorating any further. So at this point, we're holding it in place, and we brought it up to a level, to a standard that we could hold it in place without it falling in any further disrepair. And I can hold it in place for as long as the council wants to hold it in place.
Bill, what are the options then with dealing with the CDBG grant? Either accept it or reject it tonight? Can we come back later on and accept it? Is it, will it still be out there?
Will our time work?
Depends on when. I think we would have to do another application.
Would we be competing with somebody else to get those, some other jurisdiction?
Well, if we don't accept it now, they would have to put that money back on the market and offer it to somebody else. If it stays with... If it stays with them, like somebody else doesn't accept it, then we would be able to go back for it. But if it goes off to somebody else, then it's not there.
So we could lose it if we don't accept it?
And, and what's our downside, if we accept it, and for some reason we can't budget the senior center, we would just reimburse that money back, correct?
Yes, um, you know, we, we, um, right now, we're going into the architectural services that are probably cost about seventy-four thousand, uh, for twenty twelve. The money that we'll get this year is the fifty-two, fifty, sorry, fifty-three thousand, seven fifty. We'll get from CDBG, and then the rest will be attributed to the City of Milton. So, um, how much ever that architectural service ends up being, we're still, we'll be getting that fifty-three, seven fifty portion of it.
So all we're on the hook for tonight is fifty-three thousand, if we were to, if we were to go forward and not go for a senior center.
Well, we do have to go for a senior center.
I, i- if we don't, the only thing we're on the hook for reimbursing is the fifty-three.
Well, we haven't gotten the fifty-three, we haven't spent anything yet.
If we spend it, if we, if we do the architectural, so, yeah.
If we get it, we don't spend it, we just.
Yeah, if we don't.
We're only on the hook for what we spend of it if we turn around and change our mind.
Exactly, exactly.
Well, I'm with Joe, I think we bought it to, to, to be, become a senior center, um, and, and as a, as a historic asset in the city. And, and I'm, I'm for, for approving this this evening and inching forward.
Is that your motion?
This is motion, yes, so we have a discussion. You want to make a motion?
Hey, I, I can be my motion, and then we can discuss it.
Well, I like to speak as well, but go ahead, I mean, how does that work, you guys have a motion already?
Well, you can, you can, we get a second, then you can discuss it, or if you.
I'll wait a little bit.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve agenda item twelve, three zero seven.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Hewitt for approval, and a second by Councilmember Lusk. Any discussion?
Yes, thank you. Um, and with, with respect to the prior council as well, uh, just a lot of questions on this particular asset. And I, and I know we had it from a historical standpoint primarily, and I understand that, respect that as well. From a senior standpoint, though, I'm, I'm just having difficulty understanding the, uh, the reasoning behind the finances put towards this. And just because, you know, I haven't seen a lot of seniors come to me and say, I love this idea. On, I just haven't seen it from the public, and in fact, I've seen more people say that they wonder why we would spend this money when it could be used for safety issues, primarily bike lanes and roundabouts, which we are doing, and we have some things in the budget, but that is just one of the things that they have asked. And, um, also too, they, they mentioned we've already got the Bethel Community Center as a, as a location. Plus, with the deal that we had with the City of Alpharetta as well, they have North Park Senior Center right in the middle of it, which doesn't cost a thing from the city's standpoint and from the tax dollars with everybody else that's in the city. So we have parking as an issue up there, I'm not really sure exactly the safety of that as a senior center. We can't use it for wedding chapels, as we talked about the historical aspect of it, but now if that's the case, then we, we may not necessarily have that option. I'm not sure if that necessarily is accurate, but I just want to clarify that. And, and the dollar figures associated with it, you know, I, I, I wonder about the continuation of the, of the project itself. I would rather, having it been a historical structure, be under the guise of some foundation that is not yet created, but, you know, that we don't really have that out there with an interest of someone else to buy it. So, you know, as know the prior council had voted for seven, nothing, but with this new council as it is, I'm just not seeing the, the financial aspect for me to really support this, and I just have to say that with respect to everybody else. So those are real questions, though, those are things that I have heard in the community. You know, and, and as it is, as a matter of principle, I just don't know if I would have been someone that would have voted for the acquisition of the property to begin with, um, for that purpose, you know, and that's, um, you know, I'd love to see it pass seven, nothing with everything we do as a group, but I understand that we, uh, um, you know, we, we, this is not something that we'll go through without some, without some friction, I think, by some people in the community.
Karen?
The initial seventy-four thousand, is that, I assume, based on the information, that's what we expect will cost us for the design and engineering, figure out how to use the facility?
Yes, that's the first phase, we figured that we'd be able to spend for this twenty twelve, fiscal year twenty twelve.
Where did that amount come from? Is this something that will go out to bid, so?
It was an estimate, from the initial estimate from the, um, uh, the cost estimate that we got. There was a breakdown in there of the six hundred and ninety-nine thousand, um, there was a breakdown for each of the categories and.
But this is something that will go out to bid, so we don't know for sure that it's gonna be?
That's right, the seventy-four thousand was in our initial concept cost estimate. Uh, the actual architectural services was a request for qualifications that were in negotiations with the architect at this point. And we should have those dollars within the next week or two.
So are we, are we going out to bid for this? Are we trying to go back with the original, uh, company to negotiate something?
No, we put the architectural services out for a request for qualifications. So a little bit different from a bid, but with professional services, uh, we made a selection of the most qualified architect to provide these services, and then we're negotiating a price with them.
Because that scares me a little bit, because there are an awful lot of hungry architects out there, and seventy-four thousand is a, would be, you know, a significant amount of money for a, a structure of two, two thousand, twenty-five hundred square feet, maybe, at most?
Well, that's right, but there's, there's a number of different components with this one. Remember this, the historical significance of this structure. We want to make sure that we get somebody who's qualified and has some experience with these types of structures, uh, so that they can develop a set of plans that, uh, we can use relatively easily. Uh, we don't want to get halfway into this project with someone who has no experience with historical structures and find a number of different problems, end up paying for it on the, in the long run. So generally, with these types of contracts and professional services, uh, we like to get the most qualified, uh, architects and engineers up front. It's just, to me, it's better money spent on the front end than on the back end trying to correct mistakes.
And then let me just address something too, and then, and Joe had a comment. You got to realize, and, and hopefully, the number you negotiate won't be seventy-four thousand, it will be less. But a lot of times you think, an architect, and that's just drawing the, the actual building, included in the arch, in, in this fees would be engineering for mechanical, electrical, plumbing.
That's, that's correct, yes, sir.
Civil, structural, um, it would have to have a commercial kitchen and, and ADA and access and all that. So, you know, the actual architectural part might be twenty thousand or whatever out of that, if, if that. So that's, there's a lot included in that number, for Joe?
Yeah, and I guess my concern is that, you know, seventy-four thousand dollars is one thing if we're gonna spend seven hundred thousand dollars to do the whole structure. But if we look to minimize that cost, and let's say we, we just tell the architects, hey, look, all, all we're really wanting to do is about four hundred thousand dollars worth of work. All of a sudden, the seventy-four thousand becomes this bigger thing, and we get all out of whack. So, so do we need to make a decision? The reason I brought it up is if our concerns are, how much money are we spending in the long haul on the facility? I, I'm willing to bet that if the cost was only a hundred bucks, nobody here would be questioning any of this. So, so what we're really worried about is the long-term cost, and if we need to make a decision on what the long-term costs are, I think we're in a position to do that, and I think if it impacts our willingness to make this a senior center, then we need to, we need to figure that out. I, I don't see passing this motion tonight as, as being problematic because we can do all kinds of things to either get ourselves out of this or use this as the right step forward in figuring out exactly what we want to spend. So, so I still think we can, we can, you know, accept the money from the county and figure all this stuff out, but I think this is a good first step.
Bill?
I think the issue at hand here, or the point we're discussing, is whether we should or should not accept these CDBG funds. And that's only the first step going forward, uh, in the, in the whole process of determining whether or not we can afford the house, or renovating or upgrading the house. We can stop that process at any time. But this allows us, in this particular issue we're discussing here, and it is the issue, is that, uh, we need to go ahead and accept these CDBG funds right now, or risk losing them if, uh, some other jurisdiction picks them up. Like, uh, Joe was saying, uh, we get into the design process here with the actual house, and we have the ability of spending what we need to spend on the house. What we're dealing with right now is seventy-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-nine thousand, just conceptual conservative estimates of all of the bells and whistles that would be required to bring that whole facility up to usable, uh, usable condition for this particular use we're talking about, senior citizens', um, facility. And I don't think it really precludes us from using it from, for other purposes either. We could use it as for weddings and receptions, events like that. But I think the point we're talking about right now is whether or not we should accept this funding from Fulton County.
Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question?
Sure.
Would it be more amenable to the council, I guess, and I just confirm that Carter, this is definitely doable? If you were to approve the, um, approve this agenda item tonight, at least securing these funds pending us making, uh, a decision once we hear from Fulton on whether or not they fund it, and there's, there's still decision points out in the future. We feel very confident that we can and, and are happy to hold even the execution on the first dollar to be spent for architecture until after we know that decision from Fulton County. So, you know, if you were to approve this tonight, we're not gonna go rush into spending seventy-four thousand dollars wondering if Fulton's gonna approve the operational funding of it. What are we talking about at this point, thirty to forty-five days? So, um, if you had felt comfortable wanting to approve this tonight, I can tell you that we'll hold spending any funding until we know the answer from Fulton. Now fundamentally, if you still don't want to approve this tonight for a different reason, that's, that's perfectly acceptable, but we'll be willing to do that.
Think I add the possibility between now and then that Carter could have some negotiated, at least some ideas of what the architectural fees and the engineering and all would be? So that'll give us an idea of whether, you know, whether forty thousand, fifty thousand, or, or whatever, seventy, hopefully not. But I, I would certainly support that. Matt, you want, Karen?
Yeah, I just want to clarify my position again, you know, I'm, we're extending Bell Memorial Park because they're busting at the seams. You know, H Y is down there, and they're, they're growing, and we're, we're picking off some boating equipment right there. And that's, it's a high demand for, for those facilities and those fields and everything. You know, I, I worry that we're gonna be building the nicest historical building in the City of Milton that no one's gonna use. I bet, that's just, I don't see the demand for it. I, I, I really just would like to see that desire to do it, and I just haven't seen that. So as we go forward and do this, and each step we take, we're gonna get closer and closer to having the nicest historical building in Milton that potentially no one's gonna use. And that's just, and that's just my concern.
Can I just address that for one sec too? Keep in mind, this whole process, we, we do have a, a use. The senior services, um, is gonna use it and help maintain it and, and fund it. So there is, there is a use for it, so. The, the byproduct is, we also, as Bill said, we've also got a facility that can be used by our citizens, so it's certainly not gonna go to waste. But Karen, you want to go?
My fear, and I've said it before, is the fact that we're, you know, designing a Ferrari here when we probably need a, a good GM model to, in order to, uh, serve the residents, and the other money could be used somewhere else. So that, you know, I believe it probably is a real need here in Milton, but is there another use that the other money could be spent for? Do we need it a seven hundred thousand dollar facility, or is it a three or four hundred thousand dollar facility? You know, something that if it met, met the qualifications and we could use the block grant money for it, is, would it be a better use to spend the other three hundred thousand dollars on, you know, uh, ball fields or bike lanes or, or sidewalks, public safety? And we just have so many needs right now. My fear is the fact that, you know, we're doing top of the line with this whole thing, and we've got top of the line, uh, architects and consultants and all trying to design it. So they're gonna, I mean, it's gonna be a very, very nice facility, but is it the best use of the money? Or is it better to have a nice facility but not top of the line and have extra money that could be spent somewhere else?
Can I, can I just address that too? Because, you know, I don't want to assume and use the word "top of the line", but, um, I feel pretty confident that our staff has heard resounding from us, not just now, but in the past, that we don't want to, you know, we want to curtail the costs on this, and, and, you know, we want to watch that, and we're not trying to build a Ferrari. Would that be a correct statement, Chris?
That, that is, but nor am I or any of our staff members properly qualified to, to tell you today, we can build you a four hundred thousand dollar building. You know, we went to the experts who we relied upon to, um, be the experts that they are, and this is the number that they, that they've given us. Now, I hope the number comes down, I mean, please hear that, that I, I think six ninety-nine is a big number. But six ninety-nine is the only number I can point to at this point from somebody who's qualified to say six ninety-nine. So, um, I don't want to represent tonight that we can build a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar Chevy senior center. May, maybe we can, I don't, I don't know. I'm simply bringing, infernal tonight, the, the only number I have at this point from experts who are saying that's, based on the criteria that we've given them, that's what it costs. I, again, I, I really believe that's the outside number, but, you know, as we push through and systematically hone it in, just like we've done with other construction projects, my guess is the number comes down a lot quicker than it goes up.
Joe?
Two points, the six ninety-nine number that we've been using here, correct me if I'm wrong, that's the gross amount, it is not net, of the CDBG funds.
That's right.
So you take, and those funds are over three years, if I remember.
Yeah, so like a hundred and sixty-one thousand.
Correct. Second point, in all due respect, Matt here, uh, I represent, since I'm over fifty-five years old, a member of the senior community, which is one of the, if not the, largest growing sectors of our population.
If not the oldest of the least.
So I speak on behalf of, uh, those folks with gray hair or no hair in, in some cases. But, uh, maybe we haven't heard from them all, but I know Alpharetta and Roswell's, uh, programs are fairly well attended, and, uh, I think there is a need up here.
Yeah, I'm just.
Let me, let, um, I think Lance wanted to say.
Yeah, thank you. First, along same lines as Bill was talking about, the, the estimate we got included professional services, it was the entire estimate, so included professional services, which might be sixty thousand, seventy thousand, whatever. So we're not talking about putting six or, uh, seven hundred thousand dollars just into the building. It's, it's everything it takes to get that building done, basically, and opened up, turnkey. I guess that was a turnkey estimate, including commissioning and everything else. So need to put that in perspective. I also agree, you know, moving forward with accepting the block grant funds, uh, doesn't commit us to moving forward. I, I do think that perhaps we should have subsequent conversations about, I know when we did the study with precision, uh, planning, I guess that, they set the programming in that, in that study themselves as to what was needed, or did we set the programming? And should we go back and look at the programming? Because the programming is, programming and, you know, facilities, whether it's, you know, minimal facilities, phased facilities, whatever, can affect, you know, the cost significantly. So, you know, you know, that's part of the, the question is, you know, still have it as a senior facility that's adequate for use as a senior facility, that can be operated by the North Fulton Association. And perhaps upgraded over a period of years as well. So I think maybe having a subsequent conversation, I think tonight, I, I, I have no problem moving forward with accepting the block grant funds. Uh, I'm part of Mr. Lusk's group there of over fifty-five, just barely. And with not much hair. You know, my, my wife told me to get it high and tight the last time I went to the barber. So, uh, anyway, you know, I think it's a growing segment, there's more. No, no offense to Matt, but there's more life than just football and rectangular fields. And, uh, I'm sorry, I know sacrilege, but, um, but, uh, you know, there, there is a lot of need. I went, and I think Matt did too, we went to the, uh, the senior center last year when we were running for, uh, for office. I did, in Alpharetta, and met a lot of seniors, and there's a lot of demand, and there's a lot of the use. And there's, uh, people up in that part of the, of, of our world of Milton that I think would use that facility if it were there.
Let me kind of bring this back in again, we're, as several councilmembers said, we're, right now, we're just talking about, uh, accepting this funding. We, just because we accept it, um, we could always pull the plug and not spend it. I think what Chris, so this should be a, a very simple, and it sounds like the majority of the council would like to, uh, accept that. You know, subsequent, and I know Chris is trying to get it, you know, we're gonna have to decide to move forward, and so we need to. have to decide to move forward, and so we need to, you know, kind of let our staff know, are we going to move forward in that direction or do we need to make some drastic changes? So, part of this conversation is probably helpful. I know I would certainly support moving forward with the facility as planned with the idea that, you know, we're going to be as cost-effective as we can because it's, we're either going to spend it there or somewhere else, same amount of money for the same use. And we might as well take a really neat structure that everyone will appreciate and get the use out of it. But anyway, so right now, we probably ought to just go ahead and vote on this, accepting this grant. So, if somebody wants to, I don't know if we have a motion.
We do.
We have a motion, we can discuss it. So, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's six, and Councilmember Coon says no.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. We can move on to the next item, number three.
Next item is consideration of a resolution to authorize the mayor and city council to approve the submission of a grant application for the monarchs across Georgia for funding for a pollinator garden, agenda item number twelve-three-zero-eight. Ms. Cindy E.
Good evening. I don't think we'll have as much discussion on this one.
Oh, give us a chance. Oh, come on.
We've got the chance, wake you up up there. Okay. Well, I am here to talk with you a little bit about the resolution to seek approval for a grant, seven-hundred-and-fifty dollars, for the establishment of a pollinator garden, a pollinator garden also referred to as a butterfly garden. This is so that we don't have to use public funds in our project with the community wildlife habitat certification. I've been working with a couple of volunteers, one person in particular that has had some grant experience, and the three of us put together this grant. And we have spoken with the fire chief, and the idea is to develop the front yard of the Thompson Fire Station into a beautiful area that both the firemen can use because they've expressed interest in being able to have a nice place to come outside, as well as the community can come by. We're doing it in conjunction with a Boy Scout who's working on his Eagle Scout project, and he's going to be building a pathway and an arbor. And this butterfly garden will be against Thompson Road in a, probably a triangle fashion. So, we don't want to use public funds to do this. We don't have any other funding for the National Wildlife Project, and it will help us get certified as a community wildlife habitat because we're going to get about thirty points for doing this, and it's all based on a point system. So, just asking if that sounds okay? If we get the money, it'll be at the end of the year, and we will move ahead in establishing the garden in the spring. The infrastructure that the Boy Scouts working on will be kind of simultaneous at the same time.
Okay. Questions?
Well, first thing, now that I know what a growler and a pollinator garden is, this is quite an education. Sounds like a noble effort, and I think, you know, as far as the use, the location, and the fact that this is, the money that's going to be used in your market, it's a grant, I don't see any problem with it. Does each fireman get a butterfly net or something like that? Yeah, that would be good.
At least a book, identification book.
On butterflies.
Karen?
I was just going to make a motion.
There you go.
Bill's got a question, a butterfly question.
Reading the strict title of this resolution, Monarchs Across Georgia, is this specifically restricted to monarchs?
No, it's actually just the name of the grant. It's administered by the Environmental Education Alliance of Georgia, and that just happens to be their category. But it can be any kind of pollinator. It could even be bees. But we're choosing butterflies, and the design that we have in mind has a lot of native plants that will be attracting butterflies so that the monarchs can have a resting place here in Milton on their way down to visit M.D. Junior down in Honduras.
I don't think you can include all butterflies, so you can't restrict it to any one species.
It's a state of...
A real mandate. You've got to put a sign that can... Are there any other questions on the butterfly garden? Okay. Can I already get a motion?
No. I'm trying. I'd like to make a motion to approve a resolution to authorize the mayor and city council to approve the submission of a grant application to the monarchs across Georgia for the funding for a pollinator garden, agenda item number twelve-three-zero-eight.
Second motion.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Thurmond, second by Councilmember Luss. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
And just along the same line of doing good deeds for the community, I just want to present the city council with the Clean Award Pace Award that we received for being a government partner with the Clean Air Campaign, and I received that a couple of weeks ago. So, I'm going to bring that up for you. Thank you very much for your support of all of our environmental programs, and this really demonstrates that the city has gotten behind a lot of the programs that we've done in the sustainability area. We've reduced a lot of vehicle miles, saved a lot of C O two emissions out of tailpipes with people changing their commute habits and just driving a little bit differently. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Cindy, for everything you and your team's done.
Good job.
Okay. Our city clerk, please sound the next item.
Next item is consideration of a conflict waiver regarding Gerard and Davis L L P's representation of the city of Milton in relation to the First Amendment to an I G A and sublease agreement, agenda item number twelve-three-zero-nine. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you this evening. This is a waiver of conflict that is basically the other side of the coin from what you and your hat as the Public Facilities Authority proved earlier this evening, this would authorize Gerard and Davis to act on behalf of the city of Milton as opposed to the P F A with respect to the tenant, subtenant transaction we'll discuss in the next agenda item. Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Questions?
I'd just make a motion to, for consideration of a conflict waiver regarding Gerard and Davis L L P's representation of the city, or representation of the city of Milton in relation to the First Amendment to an I G A and sublease agreement, agenda item number one-two-three-zero-nine.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilmember Longoy, second by councilmember Luss. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. City clerk, please sound the next item.
Our next item is consideration of a First Amendment to intergovernmental and sublease agreement between the city of Milton and the city of Milton Public Buildings and Facilities Authority, agenda item number twelve-three-one-zero. Mr. Ken Gerard.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as the council is aware, we actually have an I G A with the Public Facilities Authority for city hall lease space that was entered in earlier this year. Now in front of you is a proposed amendment to that lease that the city council has with the P F A that would authorize one thing and one thing only, and that is a modification of the term of the lease for which the city will be leasing what we're calling the larger space for a period of six months with a offsetting rent increase. For that six months, all of the terms of the I G A would remain the same. This is the other side of the agreement that you authorized in your capacity as the P F A earlier this afternoon. This will actually consummate the transaction that we do need to consummate. Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any questions for Ken? Okay, I'll open up for a motion.
I'll move to approve the consideration of a First Amendment to intergovernmental and sublease agreement between the city of Milton and the city of Milton Public Buildings and Facilities Authority, agenda item number one-two-three-one-zero.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Councilmember Luss, second by Councilmember Coon. Need discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. City clerk, please sound the next item.
The next item was added under consent agenda by motion and vote. This is a resolution appointing and authorizing special counsel to represent the city to obtain a local option sales tax distribution certification as required under the laws of the state of Georgia to authorize said counsel to assist in the preparation, presentation, and litigation of the city's case, repeal inconsistent provisions, and for other purposes.
Mr. Mayor, before you consider this item, I just want to make note for the record that this was not an agenda item that was added during the...
Yeah, I didn't think just one more.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you very much. This is a matter that, quite frankly, implicates not only the city of Milton but also potential litigation, and has been discussed in executive session. This would, this resolution would authorize the city's retention of Andy Welch and the law firm of Smith, Welch, Webb, and White as special counsel to represent the city of Milton along with other cities with respect to our local option sales tax mediation, but also litigation with Fulton County as authorized and required, quite frankly, by state law. This is something where we simply have to file litigation to protect and secure the city of Milton's rights to furtherance of the tax as all the other municipalities in Fulton County anticipate doing. And we are trying to join with this sort of umbrella under one attorney to provide, say, coordinated, quite frankly, more efficient way of representing all of these various cities in this litigation. We have, I believe, protected the city's rights with respect to this litigation. I can recommend that we approve this resolution this evening, and I will say one more thing, and that is, when you approve this resolution, you are also approving this attorney to actually commit litigation on behalf of the city of Milton. Now, it will not be solely on our behalf, but we will be a party. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, are there any questions for the city attorney on this? Okay, I'll open up for a motion. Mayor.
I vote to approve a resolution appointing and authorizing special counsel to represent the city to obtain a local option sales tax distribution certificate as required under the laws of the state of Georgia to authorize said counsel to assist in preparation, presentation, and litigation of the city's case, repeal inconsistent provisions, and for other purposes, agenda item number one-two-three-one-one.
Second.
For clarification, the resolution we're approving is the one that you have passed out to us, not the one that was originally in our packet.
I was about to jump up and say that, but yes, thank you, Councilmember Thurmond. That is correct. That's one point that I wanted to clarify. The second point I want to clarify very quickly is, in your agenda packet, there is attached a letter from this law firm, and I just want to make clear that everyone knows, I know, and I recognize, it's actually to Sandy Springs, but the terms of the letter apply equally to Milton. I just want everybody to understand that. I get that as well, but it's the same letter issued to every city.
More questions? You have a motion? We did. Oh, I'm sorry, we're in a discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, move on to the next item.
Next item is consideration of a professional services agreement between Brown Pelican Consulting and municipalities of Fulton County for providing consulting services to cities as such services pertain to Georgia's loss distribution, agenda item number twelve-three-one-two. Mr. Chris Lagerblum.
We have a council similar topic with a little bit different perspective. The city attorney suggested that the item be approved to enter into joint council. This is a contract that would suggest that the cities want to enter into a contract with a joint consultant for the purposes and singularly the purpose of coming up with the adequate or what we believe to be the county's share versus the municipality's share. That's simply what we're doing tonight. We've had discussions on it previously, but we'd seek your approval of this contract.
Okay, any questions for the city manager on that?
Mr. Mayor, just one point of clarification to say, Councilmember Thurmond's been pointing this out, but the appropriate document is the one that I have handed out to you at your station and have also provided to the clerk. It does contain a modification from what was in the packet.
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item twelve-three-one-two.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Thurmond. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay.
I've got the wording on the one that was added by most of the...
Yeah, we want to add, we've got a net addition, we actually have two additional items, so...
Let me sound this first one, which is, because we handled it first, was a resolution allowing an absence municipality status regarding all future loss proceedings related to and triggered by the two thousand and ten census. Mayor, council, this is simply a resolution to insert it onto the public agenda, likely not to take action on this resolution tonight. I simply ask that if somebody would want to make a motion to defer this to December the third and potentially vote on that assumption.
Mayor. Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion that we defer the item that Chris just pointed out until the December third meeting of the council.
Second motion.
Okay, I have a motion by Councilmember Longoy, second by Councilmember Luss to defer this item until the December second, or December third council meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay. And we also have one other item that we amended in our agenda from our consent agenda as item number ten, item number one-two-dash-three-zero-three. Let me go back and read the item.
Approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and Owens Environmental Design L L C for conceptual design of Deerfield Park, agenda item number twelve-two-zero-three. Mr. Jim Craig.
Mayor and council, thank you for the opportunity here. This is requesting approval for funding for a initial concept, two initial concept designs for the Deerfield Park. You've heard a lot of activity of late with what's going on at Bell Memorial, the acquisition of land, and we now have on our website the R F P seeking some architectural services there. But we do have other projects working in parks and rec within the city. And here within the Deerfield community, we are working on some designs for the one-acre parcel of land that was purchased approximately two years ago with Mota funds. We have several concepts that we would like to draw out, and we have found a local landscape architect who is present in the audience, who is able to help us with several concepts of what we can do, and we want to take these drawings back to you for workshop discussion as well as to the public to seek their input. Once from there, we can get some, the general feedback of how we want to move forward, then we can look at getting pricing and what it would take to put this. So, this is to get the Deerfield Park project started.
Okay. Questions for Jim?
Bill? You bring up the point with the conceptual estimates, and in the contract document here, you call out producing two conceptual estimates.
Yes, sir.
Is that going to be narrowed down from what a dozen that you might come up with?
We have been discussing the possible uses of the land, both internally and staffed as well as within the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and we've come up with two ideas that would seem to work, and we want to use these as starter ideas to get the feedback from the citizens as well as from you, the council.
You're going to get a notice, you're going to present these to D R B. We're going to look for community input on these?
Absolutely, sir. Absolutely. We very much intend to present the, the land itself limits what we can do with it, but we've come up with two ideas that we think are viable, and I've already been in discussions with the Deerfield Commons community to get their initial feedback, and it's at the point now, we need to draw it out and start to show people what we could do with this land.
The last point here, I noticed the contract amount, four thousand eight fifty.
Yes, sir.
And then I also went through the scope of work...
Yes, sir.
...that Rich is going to produce, and I have all confidence in the ability of Richard Owens to do, to produce a good product, but it seems like a large scope of work for the cost, sounds like a great deal to me, but I just want to make sure he has it covered.
Well, we certainly had discussions with Mr. Owens, so we've taken him to the facility. We've walked it, and this was the pricing that he came up with an offer to us. And yes, it is a very reasonable price for us to get started, and we have the funding available in the capital budget for Parks and Recreation Development, and it's time we start developing parks and other parts of the city as well.
I agree.
Jim, are you okay if Carter talks to Mr. Owens about maybe doing elbow help?
Absolutely, absolutely. Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions for?
Just real quick, I know it's late, but I were wanting, glad to see something happening with this parcel. And, you know, a lot of folks around here, I think, will be very glad to see, just moving forward.
We look forward to working with you, and we apologize that it's taken so long, long meeting, but thank you for being here.
Thanks for taking the initiative to move this forward.
Thank you, sir.
And I believe we are postponing our, we don't need to go into executive session.
No, that's right. We have to approve his contract.
Do we need to approve this?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. We have to approve this, it was on this consent agenda. So, I guess I will make a motion, or ask for a motion to approve. Read the.
I got it.
All right, we'll just ask for a motion, read it out.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like a motion for the approval of a professional service agreement between the City of Milton and Owens Environmental Design LLC for conceptual design of Deerfield Park, agenda item number 12303.
Second motion.
Okay. Any discussion? Motion by council member, second by council member Loos. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Just a public comment?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I've got a couple of staff reports. I just can't see everybody from sitting there, so. I came here so when you get ready for staff reports.
Okay, we'll open up mayor's staff reports. Anybody have anything in the council they want to report on? Okay.
Oh, let's just guess.
First of all, the Parks and Rec meeting over at David Shannon's house went great. We were talking about the Bell Memorial expansion. I just want to give Jim Craig props on his presentation on that. We had a huge group there, about thirty-five people, and very interested in about it. We had, you know, people looking for information on, on walking trails and, and, you know, the Parks and Rec programs such as lacrosse, and Jim did a great job explaining exactly what was, what that was going to be. So it was great being there. Thanks to David Shannon for offering his equestrian facility for that meeting, and great job again, Jim, for doing that, and to Mark Reed and the, and the Parks and Rec Planning Commission for, for doing such a great job. Second, I wish everybody happy Thanksgiving this week, and, third.
Here it comes.
Go ahead. You had, you put the. Since I didn't bring up the idea of football to begin with, I'll just remind that person that Notre Dame is the number one team in the nation versus Virginia Tech since he started out. And, you know, hopefully we'll beat Southern Cal this week, and was very happy to do that because C-Box has been nineteen years since we've been ranked number one in November, so I'm happy about that.
I'll also echo, I, I actually told Jim the other day, I said that all the feedback I got on the Parks meeting was that people came in with a lot of questions, and after he was through making his presentation, they didn't have any questions anymore, so. Good job. Okay? Staff.
Staff reports, I've got a couple tonight that we need to spend a couple of minutes with unfortunately. I know you said it was late, but this is nowhere near as late as we have been in this building before. I want to update, update you on public safety communications and that whole system that we're talking about system design because things are starting to move fairly rapid-fire right now. And we've got some deadlines that we need to meet so that we collectively as cities don't lose out on some available incentive dollars that exist between now and the end of the calendar year. Many of the councils across the north end of Fulton County are having, hearing the same message tonight, although I'm not going to go into the nitty-gritty details of it because when we get prepared to make a presentation on the system and its design, all the cities intend on presenting the same thing to their councils that you all have. So thirty-five people in North Fulton County have the same information by which to make a decision, and not my take on it, and Terry Salt's take on it, and John Kackmar's take on it. So I'll wait and, and not go down that road. But I want to let you know that we're going to be considering and going to have to consider something on either the December 3rd meeting or later than December the 17th, and that is an IGA buy-in amongst the five cities for the creation of this public safety communication system and its governance in the short term before trying to move it towards an authority structure next year. I want to let you know that it's going to be coming forward. We're not going to have a lot of time to tinker with it because when it comes forward, we're pretty much going to have to get to a, a place of comfort in adopting it. And hopefully I'll make a sound enough presentation that you're willing to adopt it without many modifications because all five cities are going to have to adopt it simultaneously. We are looking at a capital, a capitalization of the system that is in a several million dollar mark. I can tell you that I'm reasonably satisfied at this point with the mechanism by which we've broken up the expenses, and that is to equally weight subscriber units, population, and land area into coming up with what the formula percentage is for how we pay for, number one, the capitalization, and two, the ongoing maintenance of the system. It works to our advantage to be based upon population and subscriber units. It doesn't necessarily work to our advantage based upon land area, but when you put them all three together and weigh them equally, I think it's a number that we can live with. I can tell you that that number, based on estimates of funding, and these estimates are based on real quoted dollars, so it's not, it's probably a little bit better than an estimate. We are within the funding that we have appropriated both in the last fiscal year and anticipate encumbering in the future fiscal year. We will be funded with cash and should be able to make a cash acquisition, which means we won't have to pay interest to go to finance this particular system. I think four of the five cities are definitely in that position. Johns Creek is the outlier at this point as to whether or not they intend to finance or pay cash, but we're joined by Roswell, Sandy Springs, and Alpharetta in the position of trying to just capitalize the system and build it. There will be the requirement for a, a tower location in Milton. That location right now looks to be behind Station 43. I can tell you that at least the propagation maps at this point have indicated we don't need one down on Highway 9 as we thought we might before, and we saved a spot on our site on Highway 9 for a tower. Now, it looks as though there's space that exists on the 400 footer that's over near the Verizon Amphitheater, a tower that currently exists today, that gets the propagation in the southern part of Milton just fine without having to build a second tower in Milton. So, are we going to be out of it without escaping at least some construction in Milton? No, we're not. But the northern part of the city doesn't have adequate coverage today. We're going to need to be able to provide for that, that coverage in the northern part of the city. That's really the update I have tonight. I, I wanted to make sure I said something about it because if you watch online, Alpharetta, when you get home, you'll see that they're going to give a very similar update tonight just to start to bring their councils into the, into the loop on a very high level as to what we're going to have to attack in the next month. We need to have a decision or later than December the 17th on our agenda to be able to move forward and not miss some funding incentives. I can tell you on a fourteen, fourteen and a half million dollar system, we would be walking away from almost a million dollars by not getting authority collectively as five cities to move forward before the end of the calendar year. I think I led you to believe in our funding that we were going to try to fund a million last year as we did in the capital projects account, that we were going to have to add another million this next year. I, I don't believe that we were going to have to add that whole second million in year two, so that's good news. Any questions on that? I just wanted to get your brain thinking that we're going to have to make some decisions on radio system at the next two meetings. Okay? The second staff report I have for you originates with the Georgia Council on Developmental Disabilities. You know that we participate with them in some grant funding for our community builder position. This was the one that Amanda Quintana sits in that seat for us at this point. I met with Eric Jacobson, the executive director of the Georgia Council on Developmental Disabilities last week, and the funding for that program is going to go away. Their funding is going to go away, and it's a, a decision that they have made based upon the success of our program, so it's almost a double-edged sword that our program has actually met their success benchmarks, which will now ask, we will have to make the decision of whether we continue it on as a program on our own, but they're going to use the money of their successful programs and try to broaden and spread their program across the state, which was what it was initially intended to do. So we will have funding through November the 30th for that position. I don't need an answer tonight, but we'll need to have a discussion as to whether or not we continue that funding and continue that position. I believe there's some value that's been created. Honestly, I believe we've been probably the most successful program that the Georgia Council on Developmental Disabilities has had in their real communities initiative. You know, but I, what I guess I would like for you all to kind of do, if, by, by way of any direction tonight, would be to allow me to at least continue funding that for sixty days while we work towards doing some visioning sessions to figure out if there is a longer-term vision to continue that, the, the community building type function here in Milton. I think it has more than paid for the, the fourteen thousand dollars that basically we have committed to it in the last year. Yes, sir.
What are we talking about for sixty days, and what are we talking about if we were just to do that on our own on an annual basis?
Less than twenty thousand dollars. And in fact, when it was, you know, I looked at it, and it was ten thousand dollars to finish out this fiscal year. It was relatively modest. It's, it's, it's not one of these part-time things. It's a, it's a, you know, she, she's more or less a donated to volunteer, I hate to say, when you look at how much money it costs. I think the bang for the buck in these, in these neighbor, or these, the, the environment you were in with the Parks meeting, these, these living room conversations, that we're more than getting our value out of, of just that environment. So, I don't want to come, though, seeking you to just, you know, give more money without me being able to come and tell you that this is what I envision it to be for Milton long term, but if you'd allow us to at least put that vision together, this kind of came in the middle of a month to say, gosh, your funding dries up in fourteen days. I don't think anybody, we just weren't prepared to react to that timeline. But I want to let you know that they're going to graduate us right after the first of the year is their first successful project, and graduate means take away your funding. But.
Yeah, they basically said we did such a good job, they don't need to fund us.
I'm in favor of continuing it for sixty days.
Yeah. And I just want to say too, I mean, having attended to all three of the living room conversations that we've had where I've had a chance to talk to many seniors, by the way, it was a, very well attended, all three of them, and it was, you know, at least thirty-five people on each one, which was very, very, very good, and I commend Amanda for having done such a good job on that, and, and Mayor Lockwood's mother is always a part of that too. She did a great job on that also. So I, I see the value in that. I know there was questions of the value of it when we were kind of getting going with that, but it has been very well received. And, and from a council perspective, I would like to see more of us at these. You know, it's very, very educational and, and really good chance to see exactly what people are talking about.
Great. The one thing I just want to finish up by saying, the reason I'm not coming forward is asking you to just jump in tonight is because in, in speaking with Amanda and with that committee, there are going to be some requests for some, for a modi, for some modifications as to how we deliver. I don't think that that program was specifically targeted towards catering a, the, the needs and desires of the Milton community, so I don't want to, I just didn't want to bring forward to you something that says we're going to continue to do it tomorrow like we did it yesterday, because I think we could be better. And I think if you give us sixty days, we'll prove to you that we can be better.
Sure.
Only last thing I wanted to just bring your attention to, and it's something that we've worked on on this council agendas the last couple of times, and I, I never, never really said anything about it except for the couple of council members that brought it up to me, but you'll see the way the agenda items are written are a bit different. You'll see that on, on the consent agenda, the items start with approval of, and on non-consent agenda items, you'll see it starts with the word consideration of. And we changed that because I thought it was a little bit presumptuous of us to just assume that on the new business agenda that what you were considering was whether or not to, or what you were considering was the approval of whatever we put there. You were actually going to consider the item and then make a decision as to whether you approved or denied, which is why those words have changed on new business and unfinished business. If it's on the consent agenda by a motion and vote without discussion, we are suggesting that you're going to approve that item, which is why it says approval of. So, if you've caught that change on the agenda and said, what in the world, why is this different, why are these written different, that's the reason behind that rationale. We just don't want to automatically assume that it's something on the new business agenda you're just going to approve because it's there. So, with that, if anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I'll just touch real briefly. Stacy and I had the opportunity to participate last week with Fulton County Schools, and each of us gave back a day to the Fulton County Schools. Stacy is a principal for a day at Webb Bridge Middle School, and I was the principal of the day Friday at Clifton Dale Elementary School in College Park. Very eye-opening and, and good days participating with the school board. It was education week, and we found that when we participate with them, they, they participate with us, so probably good, good days. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. If not, have a great holiday week.
Anybody?
I have one more thing to add as well. I meant to say it before the council report, but just want to say on record, thanks to Alpharetta and for everybody here for our first, at least the first one I've experienced, our first fourteen to nothing vote for the approval of the Parks and Rec deal between the two cities. And that, I think that was very great. It was great for Councilman Musk and I to go and, and speak in front of their boards and their council, and, and I, I just, I just thought that was a very historic moment for all of us, and, and just want to congratulate everybody and put on the record, congratulations to Alpharetta. I'm looking forward to the partnership going forward.
It was quite a celebration that night in Alpharetta. Overwhelmingly accepted by not only council, but their staff, even residents in the, in the audience. Made a big hit.
I was watching you all on the computer screen.
Yes.
Thanks, Mayor, that's all we have tonight.
All right, everybody here has a happy Thanksgiving.
Okay. Move to second.
I have a motion, a second to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Going to.
That's unanimous.